So for the record, it is 10:11 now. And this is a workshop that was scheduled to begin at 10:00 a.m., Wednesday, June 14, 2017. We have two items. First item is Agenda Item A, which is an audit report, and it's for Curry County. And second report would be for the Curry County Transit District. We'll come to the second topic.
Commissioner Gold, are you on?
Topic will be following.
Is everyone on? Commissioner Huxley?
Yep.
I'm on now.
All right. Oh, very good.
So we'll turn this over to, to begin with, to Louise Colstrom to make any introductions on the airport, or the audit report.
Louise Colstrom, County Council. So we have here today our representatives from Moss Adams, Amanda McCleary-More, and Leslie Musker.
It's all right. I know it's a long one.
It's a long one. I don't know how to pronounce it, but it's Leslie. So they will come up in their presentation on the audits.
Do you want to, if you want to move that so that we can move that around so you can sort of see the screen there?
Either way.
We'll just look back that way.
The mouse is right here. Oh. Okay.
It's a slightly delayed mouse.
Okay. That's okay.
So wait a minute.
So you're just gonna hear.
You see him here, and then it'll be up there? Okay. Perfect.
I think that's you right there.
I'm just gonna turn it on on the left-hand side on the bottom.
Something better.
Oh, there you go.
There you go.
There we go.
She's a better woman than I am.
Is this okay? I feel like I'm not gonna see you guys if I'm facing that way.
Just as long as you're on the TV and doing.
Am I saw on there?
Yeah, you won't.
Oh, there you go.
In living color.
Right? So as Louise mentioned, I'm Amanda McCleary-More. I'm a partner with Moss Adams. I'm located in our Medford office. And we've been working with the county for about four years now. And we just finished up the audit for June 30th, 2016.
And I'm Leslie Musker, and I also worked on the audit for about four years.
So the 2016 period, I think, ended prior to Commissioner Boyce's return.
It did. It did. It did. So.
And Louise.
Yeah. Yeah. So we're about to go into the next year with June 30th, 2017 coming up. Okay. Leslie's gonna actually start our presentation today.
Okay. Perfect. Okay. I'm gonna go over quickly what we will cover. So we're gonna talk about the natures of the services provided by Moss Adams, and our audit responsibilities, the county and management's responsibilities, the audit opinion and reports that we have issued, some best practices, observations, and recommendations that we noted during the audit. We're gonna talk about seven new accounting and auditing standards, three of which were effective for the 2016 fiscal year, and four that have been released but haven't yet been effective. And then some trends for Curry County over the last five years, and then Curry County compared to some similar counties. All right. So the nature of services provided and our responsibility as auditors. So Moss Adams was engaged to audit the county's financial statements in accordance with GAAP and GAGAS. GAAP, or generally accepted auditing standards, provide a measure of audit quality and the objectives to be achieved in an audit. And GAGAS, or general accepted government auditing standards, are used by auditors of government entities and entities that receive governmental awards. GAGAS pertains to auditors' professional qualifications, the quality of their work, the performance of field work, and meaningful reporting. Number two on there, we also assisted with and completed a technical review of the financial statements for compliance with GAAP. GAAP, or generally accepted accounting standards, is the applicable financial framework used to prepare the financial statements. The standards require to, or require that we plan and perform the audit to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free of material misstatement. Number three, compliance testing and reporting under Oregon minimum audit standards. So GAGAS requires related reporting on internal control and compliance with provisions of laws, regulations, contracts, and grant agreements. Also, in Oregon, we perform tests of compliance as specified in the Oregon Administrative Rules. The Oregon Secretary of State, Division of Audits, published the minimum standards for audits of Oregon municipal corporations. The counties, or we also consider the county's internal control over financial reporting. As auditors, we consider internal control only to determine our audit procedures and not to provide any assurance. And then fourth is we complete a single audit of federal grant programs under uniform guidance and the Single Audit Act. In 1984, Congress passed the Single Audit Act. A single audit is required if the entity expends more than $750,000 of federal funds in a fiscal year. The Office of Management and Budget determined the policies and procedures for the single audit supplements. And then Moss Adams' responsibility is to express an opinion on compliance for each of the major programs that we choose. For 2016, we tested federal service schools and roads and the airport improvement program. All right. We also were engaged to audit the Curry County Public Transit District's financial statements, which is a component of Curry County. And then our final step is reporting of audit results and communicating internal control findings with noncompliance, which is what we're doing right now. All right. So then management's responsibilities. So management is responsible to ensure that the financial statements are in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States. And then related to internal controls, management is responsible for designing, implementing, and monitoring those internal controls. Under compliance, so you want to make sure that compliance with federal statutes, regulations, and the terms and conditions of the county's federal awards applicable to its federal programs are on compliance. Fourth is required to report fraud or suspicions of fraud. Then make available documents and supporting requests during our audit, and then after we have any questions. And then finally is the representation letter, which includes representations made by management during the engagement, and it's a letter issued to us. I don't know where my, oh, maybe it's not. There we go.
So I'm gonna move on to our results. But I guess before we do, I just want to let you know if you have any questions as we're going along, you know, feel free to chime in and ask away, or you can wait till the end, of course. But I guess it's, it is management's responsibility or Moss Adams' responsibility, do you have any questions there before we move on to our audit results?
Are you going to go into then the management discussion and analysis?
We won't.
Okay. Because my only comment is, you know, this was put before, a week ago, to list this or put this topic on the workshop agenda here. That's the first time that I, after that was published, that I saw any of this information. I have certainly questions, but maybe some of them are not even appropriate during this meeting.
And actually, I didn't tell Louise this ahead of time, but the management discussion analysis is actually put together by management. It is required under the governmental accounting standards. It isn't something that we express an opinion on in actually in our report. While I will tie out the numbers and make sure it makes, that it's reasonable with respect to the financial statements, it's not something that the auditing standards have identified as.
And I understand, but again, I can only relate to the limited experience I've had in the past where we were, we discussed these draft forms before it was to this point. Which was not the case here.
Okay. And that would be something that you would work with management to review.
Understood.
Let's see. So as we go over our audit reports, you know, Leslie mentioned a number of areas. So being Oregon government, you have to comply with a number of different types of laws and regulations with respect to your federal awards and the Oregon Minimum Standards, and then complying with, you know, generally accepted accounting principles in general. So we issue a number of reports. Oops. So the financial statements is the first report in the financial, or in those that you have in front of you right now. It's page one. It's the larger bound one is the county financial statements. And so our audit report is on page one. And with respect to the county, we were able to, after all of our testing, come to unmodifying or clean opinion on the financial statements. You will see that there is a section in there where it does have a qualified piece to it. And that's because you guys have a component unit that's in your financial statement. It's a 4-H district. It's separately disclosed as a discreetly presented component unit, so it has its own financial statement within your financial statement. We weren't engaged to audit that, and they do have their own accountants, and they receive reviewed financial statements. So we've documented, basically that's what that says. It says, except for this one piece, the 4-H district, the financial statements were, we were able to get to an unmodified opinion. I just wanted to kind of clarify that because you will see that paragraph in our audit report. So other than that one thing being out of your control unless it was ever something that you did want to get audited and opined on, we were able to get a clean opinion there. So that was, that was nice to be able to present to you today. Those are obviously a large document to put together and all the work that goes into that, and so it's nice to be able to present that. Oh, geez. Sorry, this mouse is to the end of me. Okay. So then we have the Oregon Minimum Standards. So this report is on page 116. So the report over the financial statements is the first thing that you'll, that we put in the, in that document. All of these other reports I'm gonna refer to are all at the back. The very first report, there'll be, there's about five reports in the back. The first one is, I believe it starts on page 116. And so this is the report that we issue over the Oregon Minimum Standards. And our, we were able to find that the county was in compliance, but we did have some findings in there that we didn't, we haven't documented them in this report as material noncompliance or anything, but just items that are required to be communicated to you. One of them, which is, is common, and I think we've had every year as being the auditors, is over expenditures. And so there's when, sorry, what was that?
I have a question. So the funds are general fund and all other funds and appropriation levels. So I guess I don't understand how a comment can be on a fund that's within appropriation.
So if you're, are you speaking about the general fund specifically?
No, I'm just talking about all other funds because all of the funds are appropriated.
Sorry. Louise Colstrom, County Council. I guess the appropriation level, I mean, if you're going to have an over expenditure in a fund, and if it's within an appropriation level, what?
And it's actually, it's not at the fund level. So you, in your budget document, what you put together is materials and service, personnel, services, and then transfers in or out, and then you could have special items or capital outlay. And so because it's in your budget document that way, that's the way that if it's over, and it's a disclosure in your financial statements that's required by GAAP if you overexpend in one of those areas.
Is there a certain percentage at which it, the noncompliance is triggered, like if you're over 10% or?
It's $1.
Yeah. $1.
$1.
Well, I guess my question is, is this comment here experienced budgetary over expenditures in various funds, were those over expenditure of a fund? Because that's what it was listed back here. Or is it over expenditures of an appropriation level like personnel services?
It's over an appropriation level. So that's actually disclosed in note two, and you'll see how those are listed in there. And it is, it'll be by fund, but then it has listed materials and service, personnel, capital outlay.
I was taking those comments back there to be by just over expenditure of a fund.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Because, yeah, just Commissioner Huxley, that was on page 31, because I had that as a question when I had reviewed, and I saw it was referring specifically to four different funds with ending negative balances on number two.
So there's, so there's two things. There's over budget in an area such as personnel services. So that's the very, that's the table. And then you're right below that is if you have a deficit balance in any fund, that also requires disclosure.
Okay. Which was on note two.
It's in note two, yes.
That you were talking about on page 31.
Yeah.
Okay.
So those are, those are items, but I mean, we didn't, I mean, it did not modify our opinion. Those are just disclosures in the notes and that we, that we call out in our, in our report. See if I can get this right this time. So for the single audit, Leslie had mentioned that we, we had two major programs required to be audited this year. So when we, when we have the single audit, we have to identify programs as type A or type B based on their dollar threshold. And then we do a risk assessment over those to determine which of the programs we're going to audit. So in the current year, as Leslie mentioned, it was the Forest Service Cluster, the roads and schools money that you get from the Department of Agriculture. And then the Airport Improvement Program. So those were the two, the two programs that we audited in the current year. Your total federal expenditures, if you, if you look on your schedule of expended awards, is about just over $5 million. So if you have over $750,000, that's what throws you into that requirement to have the single audit. So for the first program, the federal service schools and roads, we were able to complete our testing and issue a clean opinion over that, that program. For the Airport Improvement Program, we did find a couple instances of material noncompliance. One, we identified as a significant deficiency in internal controls, and the other was a material weakness. So I'll spend a little bit more time going over that one because management responded to those findings, and there's a corrective action plan that's in these financial statements as well that you can turn to. I think it actually is page 128, if you wanna, if you wanna look at those. But what we found there for the noncompliance findings over Airport Improvement Program, the first one was related to, it's, it has a matching component to this grant. So what your grant agreement says is that you can request 90% of expenditures, and then 10% needs to come from another component. Either it can come from your general fund, or you can get another grant to support that fund. What we found during our testing that was 100% of expenditures were being requested. And so there was 67,882. That was the 10% that, that should not have been requested on that grant. So that should have actually, should have come from another source. And so we have that finding on that piece. The second one was on reporting, and there's reports that are required to be filed with, on these grants, with the, with the federal government that issues these grants. And in this case, there should have been two reports. One was called SS 270, or SA 271 and SA 425.
I think they're SF, but yes.
SF, SF, yeah.
They're in favor of them.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Are required to be filed. And we couldn't find any evidence, and it sounded like what had happened is maybe the program director of that program had left. And so I guess it's possible that those reports were filed, but we couldn't find any evidence of that. And I know Louise looked hard to see if those had been filed, but at the very least, we did not get that support. And so definitely two areas that need to be looked into. I know you still have airport funds out there, and so you're gonna want to make sure that you get this back into compliance. And so I think that there's a corrective action plan that is working towards that. And I know you talked briefly about that before we came in here today. The other item that we found wasn't over a specific grant, but your single audit needs to be filed, but within nine months of year-end. And we're, we're in June right now, so clearly past that nine-month mark. And so we have, we just have a finding in there that you should make sure that you file by March 31st next year. So we had that comment as well.
So ours was not filed at all?
It was. It was just late.
Yeah.
Later than the requirement, because we just issued the audit.
Yeah. Okay.
So that's this work, you mean?
Yeah. Yeah. Any questions over that? I know that's.
Well, that part's easily rectified, I would think.
Again, with the Airport Improvement Program, there are different, sometimes the matching is only 5%, sometimes it's 10%. So you really do have to make sure you read each agreement, because it can be different. It is not always the same percentage.
I did it again. I have one more slide on that one, and then. Okay. So the Yellow Book Report is the, this is the report that we do because it's in governmental auditing standards. So Leslie had mentioned that we issue a report on internal control and compliance as it relates to the financial statements as a whole. So this isn't digging into any one specific program or anything like that. This is with, with respect to the financial statements as a whole. And we actually, the comment that we had here actually carries over from prior years. And while we didn't find anything in the current year that was significant, nothing had changed with respect to these internal controls, and, and the area that we had a comment on is accounts receivable. Or, you know, so it's basically grant money or any sort of intergovernmental money that you're expected to receive. There isn't a accounts receivable module where it's being tracked to make sure that it's collected upon. What we found, and I mean, like I said, this wasn't related to this year, but to 2015, so it's a carryover comment, was that you had received some money from Oregon Department of Transportation to fix some roads, and it had been accumulating expenses over a couple of years. And because it was a reimbursement grant, you weren't recording the receivable, you got the, you did get the money that you were supposed to. It's just the period that it got recorded in was not the right period because it wasn't being tracked in some sort of a receivable module.
So would you recommend that we have one person in charge of grants to make sure that they're carried out according to what the grant says? Because we're finding that we're having a lot of these problems.
I think, I actually think that it's, what I've seen that works well is, and actually, well, when we, we have some other areas where we have suggestions for improvements but aren't to this level where we document them as a finding. One of them is related to minutes and documenting minutes. So I think one good way is to have really good robust minutes that identify when you receive a new grant, and then having somebody track it. I do think it's good for a point person. So you guys have centralized accounting. And so having the person that's in charge of accounting know what's out there and what is expected to come in. So I think that's an additional, additional layer. And then really, a third layer would be making sure that you have program managers that are aware of this. And then when you do a year-end close, which you're about to go through, getting a, basically a memo that goes out to the departments that says, what grants did you, did you work on during the year? Have you requested any receivables? And, you know, just doing that question. So to have it only rely on one person, I think, can somewhat be a challenge. What I see works well is when you have those three working together.
But one person kind of in charge, making sure that the other folks do what they're supposed to do.
Yeah. So I would say that account, maybe whoever's in charge of accounting and reporting.
County Council. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm looking at the thicker packet, and I'm looking on page 128 of that that talks about corrective action plan.
This is the last page.
Yeah.
And it, it seems to have some of the concepts you're talking about right there in it.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. Okay.
So those are our reports that, that we issued and attached to your financial statements, and they, and they get filed with the state and with, with the federal government. Any questions on any of those?
You mentioned minutes, and we're gonna have a big rah-oo-hoo about minutes. But would you suggest, rather than going all the way back to when we didn't have minutes, let's just start fresh, do it now, and forget the past?
So.
So what are they gonna do to us if they can't find minutes from 20 years ago?
Right. And we don't, and we don't have, I mean, we don't, we didn't issue the minutes as a finding. We have it as a best practice. So I would say if you're constrained on resources, does, you need to, as management of the county, determine whether it makes the most sense to go back and document old minutes or not. I know a lot of them are taped, so it's not like they're, it's not like you don't have some evidence of, of minutes. So I think if, if management makes that decision, I think it's better than not doing them.
Okay.
What was that last you said? I'm sorry.
That it's better than not doing them. If management decides that going forward, we're gonna, we're gonna start clean here and just continue to go here, rather than spend a lot of resources, which you're limited on, to go back and document all of these, when you do have some evidence with, with the tapes, you know? So I think.
So in other words, let's repent right now and move forward.
We, we won't dwell on this because we have a separate, but there are also, in addition to Oregon revised statutes, there are conflicting Oregon revised.
Administrative rules.
Administrative rules and archival. So, and then that falls under the Oregon Secretary of State. So it's, it's not just as easy as saying, well, you should, you should do this on it.
Right. Right. Yeah. You do need to make sure that you're following the laws. Now, finally, to this slide. So these are our areas where we've identified some comments for best practices. So these aren't areas where, like I mentioned, we didn't, we don't have a finding for them. They didn't modify our opinion. These aren't the things that, that gave us the biggest concern, but we did want to communicate some, just some areas for potential improvements for, for future years. It's, or just best practices. The first one I have, and actually, I, you should have a letter for this one. This, this letter is the management advisory comment, so it says management letter. And so these are just a few areas that we have suggestions for improvements on. I'm probably not gonna spend a ton of time going over these, but if you have any questions, absolutely jump in. The first one is related to the Oregon Minimum Standard. So you mentioned that for minutes, you may have something specific to follow there. And so there, there are a lot of rules under there. Of course, we don't test every, each and every one. I mean, your audit would never end, right?
We can't pay you, so.
Yeah.
Guaranteed employment.
If you're gonna test them all? Yeah. We can hear a while.
If that's an area you're interested in, I'm sure we can develop some. But, so we have, so we have a couple of comments on, on items that we did notice in, in there. And the first one is just related to the over expenditures and then the fund deficit balances. So we just have it in here as, as an area to make sure that you continue to monitor because, like I said, materiality there for reporting an over expenditure is $1. So you know, where it typically comes in is at year-end when you're doing closing, and you may have been within budget all year long, and then you record your year-end accruals because you operate on the cash basis all year. And then there are some, under the modified accrual method of accounting, some accruals that you have to come in at year-end, and sometimes those will be the ones that throw your expenditures out of whack. And so just something to make sure that you're monitoring and, and watching. The second one is a, is a repeat comment that we've had, and actually, I, we had some follow-up, I think, on this one this year, but I don't think there has been any changes related to reassessing the property values. I have a slide later that talks a little bit about where your permanent tax rate is. And so this talks a little bit about if, if there has been any growth or any increase in values in, in the county. The assessor doesn't appear to have the time to go out and, and look at all the properties. So there are. So there may be some lost revenue there. We have it here as a comment. Of course, you do have to, as management, do a cost-benefit analysis. What do you think that the revenues that you could be missing out on might be? I think in prior discussions, it sounds like it might be minimal, but it's hard to tell without actually going out and doing the reassessment. So it sounded like there was some interest in maybe trying to go out and continue to do that. Did you have a question? No, sorry. The next one actually relates to a question that Louise was kind of bringing up on your legal level of control for the budget. And right now, your budget document actually has your legal level of control in two ways for the general fund. One way is by organization units. So county administration, county council, those types of departments, basically, that the general fund operates. It also has in there, and then it has the department, and then it has the classifications of materials and service, personnel expenses, capital outlay. So basically, you have two levels of control that you're trying to adhere to, which then, of course, is more complicated and can be somewhat confusing just because you do have those two, where all of the other funds operate in the object level, where you're just looking at materials and services and personnel costs.
Louise Callister, I'm county count. I guess I'm not sure of that statement. Of course, I've been working on that appropriation sheet, and it'll be on our agenda next week. But the county is listing the general fund by department, but appropriating at the personnel services levels. I don't think that they are appropriating by department in the general fund.
Okay.
And I think that's true. I mean, that's my intention of the appropriation levels. But when you look at the... Of course, I'm used to the one for the schools. It's completely different from this one. So when you look at what local budget law is saying is is that the general fund must be listed by department.
And I'm not saying must be by department. You could do it... I'm suggesting either by department or by object, rather than both.
And I thought that you, reading the local budget law on this, or actually looking at their form, I thought that you had to appropriate by... I thought I was appropriating by classification, but not by department in the general fund.
Yeah, you would have to look at what the board actually adopts. And because you can complete the form, but what you actually adopt could just be by department. So what the Board of Commissioners ends up signing could just have county council, sheriff, you know, whatever the departments are with a total.
Well, I thought we had to adopt by the personnel services, materials and services.
County Council, you are. Thanks. I don't have the statute in front of me. And I also had understood, and I've been through different local budget adoptions at different organizations and municipal organizations like counties that was a city. But we also... And my recollection of the statute, it says you have to do what they call fund accounting, which is material, personal services, material services, and capital accounts, those kind of funds. And I'm just not sure what... How you're using the phrase "legal levels of control." What... How do you see just our adoption of the budget to establish a legal level of control? I don't know what that means in your parlance.
So basically, the legal level of control is actually what gets adopted under the board order. So... Because you can have a lot more detail in your budget document.
Sure, but what do you mean? What does... When I think of legal level of control, and when I think of control, you know, from what I understand, I'll just briefly, and I don't want to belabor this, but you adopt a budget and you make appropriations in these different fund accountings.
Right.
And then, you know, you can't spend it unless it's appropriated.
Right.
And then we have a budget law to establish appropriations, but then we have a different spending statutes that talk about actually writing checks and having the money go somewhere. So in my mind, the controls are through... You have to appropriate it to spend it, and then you have to follow these other processes to...
Right, and I totally agree with you.
But I'm not sure how you're... What legal level of control means to you when you say it like that.
And so I guess what we're talking about that is how it gets reported in your financial statements. So right now, you basically have two different supplemental schedules to report how the general fund spent its money. One is, which is the required supplemental schedule, which is on page... And so this is why... Maybe this will help kind of show why it's a little bit confusing.
Sure.
So on page... And this is what you would... You might not see in another county or another city's financial statement. So on page 46 is your general fund. And so this is what is presented by personnel services, materials and service, capital outlay in total. But you guys have an entirely another supplemental schedule to show general fund by department by object, which is on page... It's at the end of your financial statements. It starts on page 103. So it's just... How you're doing it is okay. I'm not saying that it's wrong by any means. It's just more work because you have these additional schedules at the back that are then by department. So I'm not by any means saying... And that's why, I mean, this isn't a finding. This is just a suggestion for...
So question, if we were to switch to the way that you're suggesting, would we have a significantly lower cost of your services?
No, no, yeah. So I mean, but what it is, is management has to put together these financial statements. And it's an additional... 10 pages, so...
And so as the county council, you mentioned you started out talking about GAGIS and gas. Is that where some of these legal levels of control concepts that you're talking about are coming from? Are those accounting-specific? Because again, I'm thinking it's legal to do... I look at, is what we're doing legal? And I'm saying, "Yeah, I think it is."
Yes, and we... Yeah.
And so I'm... So that's... When you talk about we can change or we might want to do our legal levels of control differently, I'm thinking, "Well, sure, there's probably several different ways you can do things legally." But just for the record, the way we are doing it is lawful.
Yes, yes, yeah. No, I'm not, definitely not saying that. It's just you have those additional 10 pages.
Now, the other thing, does that additional 10 pages, not from a legal point of view, but from just a explanation or from a description of our operations, do those help? You know, it seems like in the one way where you just say the fund, it seems like that's very summary description. Does those other 10 pages break that out and describe for more detail for anyone interested in knowing where our money is, what's going on?
Yeah, it absolutely does.
So there may be some benefit to doing it that way for people who want to follow where the money's going and things.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
So we're doing extra?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thanks.
A+ instead of A.
I have a question because I really haven't encountered this before. If I adopted the budget and the resolutions, just so general fund by personnel services, materials and services, and then all other funds by personnel services, materials and services, just those two appropriation levels, would I get deficit fund comments on the audit?
Well, I guess it... I mean, it depends on what your ending balance is. It's totally about ending balance.
But I mean, I'm just wondering if that would...
So deficit fund is totally different than over expenditure. So are you talking over expenditure?
Because I haven't... I guess I have had before, I've had special revenue funds. And within that special revenue funds, I had food service. Food service was always a deficit, but it wasn't a comment because it was part of all the other special revenue funds.
So I think you're talking about over expenditure.
No, I'm talking about a deficit balance in one of the funds.
Okay, so the ending balance is negative?
Yes, of one of the funds. But I really wasn't getting comments on that because the... All of the special revenue funds were together as one appropriation level. So I didn't... It was like it was one fund.
Yes, and under the accounting standards, so not budget law, under the accounting standards, all deficit budgets need to be disclosed. So that's a...
I know.
And so that's... I know that's... It's so confusing to talk about what your... What laws are versus just what Gatsby is out there saying. What do you have to put into this disclosure document? And so it's an accounting standard that says you have to put it into the financial statements as a disclosure item.
I just don't remember having a disclosure of having a negative fund balance when my food...
I see it missed a lot, I would say.
Food service wasn't... Was always negative.
Yeah, and I would say... I would say I've seen it missed a lot. And actually, it's actually become more common, most recently because of the changes in PERS and how that's recorded to your financial statements. I don't remember for yours off the top of my head, but I think it's possible that one of the funds is definitely related to recording a PERS liability. So you have a large expense. You didn't cut a check for it, so it wasn't cash out the door. But you know, you have this liability that wasn't previously recorded in the financial statements because if you remember, last year it was an asset. And so in the current year...
It's a liability.
It's a liability. And so actually, last year was the first year that I saw a lot more deficit balances because you don't know until you get your PERS report what your entire liability is going to be. And then you have to allocate that to your funds. And so I would say, until recently, it hasn't even... I haven't seen it as commonly as I am now.
Because I don't remember seeing more than one fund having a deficit in that year. But there was several listed, so...
Yep, yep. So I can't remember specifically for those specific funds that are listed there, but I wouldn't be surprised if at least one of them is because of the PERS allocation to that fund.
Not to beat the extra eight or 10 pages, but I think it's... The extra eight or 10 pages are really a result, in my perspective, of the way we do our budget process, the way we do our worksheets. And it's an invaluable tool to get down to the department-by-department basis. Just, and I think it's, for all purposes, it's almost created by virtue of the way we do the budget process and those worksheets, plus the monthly revenue and expense reports that track the same exact way that we do with our budget. So yeah, I think it's a valuable...
And that's absolutely, like I said, not wrong. And if that's something that you feel is valuable and valuable to the county and the people who look at the financial statements, then I would say take our comment and like cross it off.
And we request a credit for your time.
We'll note it. We'll note your comment.
Well, we're fixed fee, so any time that I go over is on me. You mentioned today that we're on our time. But I can tell you, we've already exceeded that time. And I, you know, we definitely spend more than we charge.
Oh, good. That makes me feel better.
I have some more questions in. I have some more questions in.
Remember Panoply.
Yes, you have a good captive on it, so... But no, that's the beauty of fixed fee for you. Okay, so I guess I have a few more, so... Ah, let's see. Just a couple... I might just hit on a couple that I thought were a little bit more significant here. Maybe go to the capital assets one, the construction and process capitalization. So in the current year, there was, I don't know, maybe four or five projects transferred out of your construction and progress account into your fixed asset schedule, so where you're going to record accumulated depreciation. And that adjustment was made to the financial statements. However, by the end of our audit, it hadn't yet been added as assets within your depreciation software. So the reason I put that on here is I know Louise is leaving, and I just don't want it to fall off the radar for next year because while this year that would have been very insignificant in what depreciation expense would be, it'll quickly add up. Next year will be a full year of depreciation. And so that is why that one is on here. I just not...
Yeah, and I have been researching that and talking because actually, what I did was the construction and progress very late in the audit and the capital assets very early. So it wasn't realized until we were basically at the end that what went out of construction and progress did not actually hit capital assets in our asset program. And so I've been talking to my assistants about it and trying to come up with a way to make sure that those two are matched early on in the closing process so that it all gets recorded.
Yes, so that's important.
And even though Louise is leaving, we are trying to work on some kind of an agreement with her. And it may include...
Pride.
It may include some...
Year-end closing.
It may include some tasks that reflect, very similar to the items, the, what's called the corrective action plan. So we appreciate that, and we're... We don't intend to let this just fall off the map. We intend to follow it, and we're working on it.
And I think, I mean, even rolling forward capital assets this year, it'll become very clear that that would need to get added. But I just wanted to highlight it just so that it's definitely somewhere, so it doesn't get forgotten. Let's see.
There's a little table on the side that pulls...
What was the little thing? It just fell slightly.
Oh. Oh, there we go.
Then we wouldn't even lose it. Perfect.
Let's see, and then the... Oh, wait.
Oh, a high-tech podium.
I guess I want... I just want to go to the last one that I think is... Oh, we want a few. There we go. So the last one that I kind of wanted to highlight here is this last one on the page was just deferral of the procurement policy. So a few years ago, the guidance surrounding federal awards changed. And it used to be what we called a 133 audit or a single audit. It's still a single audit, but now the new guidance is called uniform guidance. And so that's what raised the threshold for where you would test a major program of your federal awards. And what it also did is it changed the compliance requirements when we perform our testing or that management has to monitor with respect to those awards. And one of the ones that has had a deferral period is the procurement policy. So there's actually a lot of example policies out there for this. But it actually has some very specific requirements on procurement with respect to federal awards. It needs to be a written policy. And it was until about a month ago, it was required to be implemented July 1st, 2017. They just issued one more deferral. So you have now until July 1st, 2018 to have this in place. So the policy needs to be in place by then. It needs to be implemented starting that day. So any of your federal awards, anybody who's a program manager, anybody who's responsible for overseeing those, needs to know what that is because you probably have your procurement policy that you follow right now, and it's in compliance for Oregon and for the county needs. But anything that has that federal taint to it needs to follow these new standards. And so...
I like your choice of words, "taint."
So I put that one on there. It was nice that that one-year deferral came out. And then as far as you should document, so this might be something that you get documented, is that you are following the old standards because it should be written, so that... So we have that comment in here as well, is that you should document, "Okay, we're following our old standards. We're deferring to July 1st, 2018." And just so that you have that support if, you know, if anybody ever came in, that you had that support to say, "Yes, we are following our old ones. We will implement what we're supposed to on July 1st."
Thank you.
I have some examples, if you want.
I know, I think we sent them to you, but if not, let us know.
Okay.
So that was best practices. I know we had a lot of good discussion over that. And like I said, these are just best practices or recommendations. These weren't anything that I was implying that you were doing wrong. Just some comments for potential changes, but it sounds, I mean... Anything else there? I didn't hit on everything in here just because I don't know how much time you want us to spend.
As long as you're not on the clock, we're okay.
I can touch on one other one then, is the road fund reserves. And this is just, I know you have the ability to move some of the road fund money... is just, I know you have the, the ability to, um, move some of the road fund money to support, um, some, some of the sheriff services. And so, um, it didn't actually look like for 2016, that money was moved for that-
There wasn't.
But i- is it planned for-
Next year, no.
Okay.
It's happening this year, but none for next year.
Okay, so I, I think, we just put a comment in here, just as a reminder, that obviously, if you do, you have the ability to do that, and if you do, you use that money, to definitely consider, you know, the future of roads, and, um, right now, it does, at least is, is last we checked, there wasn't a plan that basically penciled out the road department and what might come due for infrastructure over the next, you know, 10 years, and just making sure that you do have the resources available to meet those needs, because it is, it is important, and you want to make sure. But it sounds like you might be managing that, um, because I, like I said, in these financial statements, I didn't see any transfer. I know the year before there was, and then obviously, we haven't got to 2017 yet, so. Just kind of a high level, just suggestion for the, for the road department to put out a, a, uh, improvement plan.
So just so you know, we did, um, during the budget process, um, talk a lot about five-year plans, five-year plans on, um, the road department, five-year plans on vehicles, five-year plans on, um, maintenance, five-year plans on IT maintenance. So we did, uh, go through, um, some five-year planning in our budget, um, process this year.
Good to hear. Any questions on any of those?
Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I, I just put a couple together, two slides, we actually have a whole different, uh, presentation that we could do, um, I just put together two high-level ones, just to kind of show some, so show some trends in the county. Actually, I only have two slides, but we do actually have a full presentation that we can do, that has, um, all the different, um, funds, uh, that you're full of cool, what that looks like, and just, uh, some unique, you know, graphs to look at, but I put together just a couple for you, yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
I just wondered if that was in our information here?
This is not.
No, but, but, no, that, that, that file is on that, now is that something we may have a copy of, or keep a copy of?
Of, of this?
Of that file, which-
Yeah, you can have, yeah, sure.
It would show these, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and I actually have one, I think that we did for you last year, that was, it was three years, it was twenty, twenty, or 2005, 2010, 2015, I didn't, since that was a separate one, I didn't do that for this, because I figured this was already going to be relatively lengthy. But I do have that, if you're, if you want that as well, it, I think there was quite a few more graphs, and it's just, it doesn't capture 2016, but it does have an interesting-
For our, for our records and, and-
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you can absolutely keep a copy of this presentation, and then I can absolutely send you that other one.
Okay, super, great.
So this is just, this is your general fund, because obviously, this is the fund that's the most, can be the most constrained, and, uh, while the, the county has faced some challenges, what I thought was unique about this slide is really showing that over the last five years, uh, you really have been able to curb your expenses, and keep those relatively fat, flat, so that means you're probably being able to maintain service at this, at the same levels. However, uh, the revenue line, what's, what's a little bit, I would say deceiving about this, is this includes transfers in. So, in 2015, while it looks like you had an up year in revenue, um, that is the year that included the transfer in from the road department, without the road department transfer, it was actually 6 million. And the current year was a very small transfer in, so if, if you didn't have transfers in there, you would see, um, a dip down, and maybe a, a little dip back up. And then this green bar, the last bar, is actually your fund balance, and so this is kind of showing that you're, uh, you had a little bit of a dip this last year, but hold, you know, holding that fund balance while you're looking for other ways to either, uh, maintain expenses, or, um, bring in some additional revenue streams in order to support service in the, in the jungle fund. But not having to go to the, the road, the road fund in 2016 is, is really the result, is that dip in fund balance, but, um, it's good to be able to maintain that fund, and not have to go there. And then the other slide I just wanted to put up there is just kind of, um, curry in relation to, I, I put together just, uh, three county average, just to look at basically what your property tax, uh, your direct rate is, and I compared to Clamath-Tilmuk and Yam Hill, and just looking at the, uh, obviously, you have some constraints there, and so, you know, whether you could go out and reassess values, or, uh, you know, maintain service with what you're, what you're operating at, I just kind of wanted to, um, show this slide to you, just because I think that it kind of speaks to where, where the county is sitting in that area.
And that's just counties, we're not talking all the other special districts and stuff.
No, this, yeah, so this is, this is your, um, direct rate, so hopefully, that ties to your direct rate.
It does.
And like I said, we actually have a whole presentation of, of a bunch of different slides, I just pulled out a couple that I thought might be of interest. And then, we're just going to close with some of the, um, new accounting standards that are out there, and what was implemented in the current year. The current year ones, um, I would say out of these, the only one that you probably noticed any difference in your financial statements is this first one, on the fair value measurements application. So what that new standard did, so it's a new disclosure on your, in your financial statements, that basically tells how, um, any sort of investments that are, that are at fair value, how you calculate fair value, or how it's calculated, and then what type of level it is, and so there's three different levels, they're disclosed in your notes, the level one investment would be anything that's a stock, so you could go out and see it's publicly traded, and then a level two could be traded, but maybe not as often, and then a level three would be something that you had to put something together for as like, uh, like a cash flow projection, and, and mark it to fair value. So that's just a new requirement, um, that, that all governments had to implement in this, this last year. Little bit of a snoozer, but, um, just, it's, in the, in the for-profit world, they've been having this disclosure for a very long time, and so it just kind of, um, brought it into the, the governmental world, uh, and they actually, I think that they did a little bit of a better job, it's not quite as complex as the one that they did for the, for the for-profit world. And then, so that was in the current year, so that was something new, um. What you have going for next year, uh, is a couple new ones. This first one, Gatsby 74, this is related to, um, other post-employment benefit plans. So this is actually a plan, so if you, um, had a trust or something for, uh, say if you have health insurance, that you're going to pay for your employees after they were to leave, that would be considered an other post-employment benefit plan. If you had one of those, and you were maintaining assets for it, you'd have to follow the standard. But typically, this would be like, um, a third party, so they would implement it. And then, and what happens is then in the next year, you would have to follow the same, you would have to record that liability based on the plan. So very similar to when you adopted the new Gatsby 68 standard for PERS, when that liability hit your balance sheet. The first year, I'm just going to kind of do a, a correlation here, PERS, Oregon PERS had to implement Gatsby 67, so that they would provide you all the schedules that you needed to put the liability or assets on your books in the next year. So this is the same thing, except for other post-employment benefit plans, so, very similar. If you have one, which I can't remember off the top of my head, if you do-
I can't think of one.
Okay. Yeah, okay, so, these will be not applicable to you, if you, if you don't have those, I couldn't, I couldn't, I couldn't remember, I couldn't remember off, off the top of my head.
Perfect.
But if you do, and, um, then it would be effective for the financial statement reporting in 2018, so you've got a, a year on that one, so if anything comes up, any new ones. And then, the one that will affect you, and actually, the department that's going to affect the most is actually the assessor's office, is Gatsby 77. And, so I don't know if, um, your assessor specifically has been keeping up on this or not, the Oregon, uh, Assessors Association has been, um, very active in determining, um, what is scoped in and what is scoped out for this. So what this new standard is, is, um, for tax abatements. So when you entered into agreements to abate taxes, so that there will be some sort of maybe economic development, or something along those lines, until now, um, there was no accounting guidance on if you had to do anything with that, if you did, what it was, or any, there was nothing out there. When this standard came out, it says that you're going to have to disclose this information, so you're not going to record it on your balance sheet, or anything of that nature, but you do have to have a disclosure on it. And so why, why it's important is actually, the cities and other districts are all going to be looking to you to find out their numbers, and, so it's important to know that. So you already have the information, because it was, what it's related to is the, uh, November 2017 tax rule, so that information is out there. And then looking at any of the abatement programs, uh, that apply to you, so I actually have a list, so I could always, um, provide that to your assessor, um, but if he, I just don't know if he's as actively involved with the Assessors Association, because they came together and looked at a number of the Oregon abatement programs, to see what was scoped into this, and what was scoped out. And so what you'll do is, you'll disclose all of those in your notes, the name of the program, and then how much revenue was abated, I guess, for, for this amount. Uh, there are some examples out there, so, uh, I know Multnomah County, uh, Deschutes, and I think Clackamas, all have, uh, published what they're going to provide, and so it's on their website, so there's some examples out there. And then I actually have a list of other, um, counties that use the same property tax program that you use, so if they've already done some of the labor, you might be able to, to utilize that as well, so. But something to know, be aware of, that the assessor hopefully is aware of this, um, and, because people will probably be coming to him in the next couple months, so.
We'll give him a tough quiz.
You mentioned economic development, is this the type of program, I think I've seen the statutes where sometimes if there is a, a survivor of a deceased military or law enforcement, they can get a deferral or something on their property taxes, is that the type of, is that the type of program we've got, or is you really talking about economic development?
It's, I think it's, eh, eh, economic development, so I actually have a list of them all, and I think that one's on there, and I just can't remember off the top of my head.
Okay.
I'm never going to, I, I don't think at this point, I've been going to memorize these, but, um-
I agree with that.
Because I think it is, there, I think there was about 30 on this list, and maybe half of them qualified, because there has to be an agreement, and I think that it has to be, yeah, and I think it has to be for economic development, uh, so there are some requirements. The Assessors Association went through all of the ones under the Oregon statutes, and put together whether they thought that they, um, complied or not with the, for, for the accounting piece of it, anyway, um, and then, uh, actually put the reasons why, and so.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, so, so there's a lot of information out there, so, uh, you should have some support when you go down that road, and obviously, we can always provide you with the, with the information I mentioned as well, so. And then the last one, uh, they're just changing some of the, the requirements for component units, so you have two component units, you have the 4-H district, and then you have, um, the public transit district. Right now, they're both discreetly presented on your financial statements, so if you look at page, just as an example, you look at page 12, you see that they're, they have their own columns, this is considered discreetly presented. If it was a blended component unit, you actually wouldn't see it in here, it would be within your governmental funds, or your proprietary funds, uh, and you wouldn't see them broken out separately. There's going to be some rules, so you have to actually go through a process of determining whether it's discreetly presented or blended. And so, when that becomes effective, it's going to change some of those requirements, so you'll have to take another look at these two, to see if they should be blended, or, or continue to be discreetly presented as they are here, so.
And you have some standards to determine that?
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah, so it's under Gatsby 80, and I think that there might be a flow chart in there, that helps.
And, uh, as you do the audit for 63217, that will be enforced, or is it when you do the audit for six-
So it's effective for June 3, 2017, so, uh, when the, the next financial statements are drafted, you'll need to go through that.
So we need to look at those before we, uh, get to somewhere around September, October, because hopefully, the audit will be done at a much faster pace this year.
Yeah.
Will we be way behind this year, or something? We are extremely behind, we should be doing this right here, back in January. Oh, we missed.
Yeah, yeah, actually, the financial statements are due to the state by December 31st. But-
Oh.
You were challenged for a period of time with no, with no county accountant there to-
And I usually have the presentation sometime in January to the board, after it goes to the state, and we have final statements. So, yes, very late.
Are we better situated this year to comply?
Well, I, I certainly hope so, you're, once again, you're going to be changing county accountants, but I'm, I've got a file of, uh, of, of closing comments of, of things that need, I know need to be done, and, um, depending on when you get the new person on board, I will be starting the audit, uh, closing, year-end closing process, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, because I think how, there was definitely a few months with nobody in your position, and then-
Yeah, from March until August.
Yeah, right, so that-
So it was quite, um, quite hard. Not a good transition, huh? No.
And with that, any other final closing comments, questions?
Nope.
Thank you, both of you, very much-
Thank you.
For the presentation.
Absolutely.
Before, I have a question, uh, outside the meeting, before you guys, before you guys leave, so just to go and take a minute to ask you.
Okay, that's perfect.
Well, do you want to then take a recess? We didn't really have a recess before the last meeting, and our next subject, uh-
We had a two-minute.
Sorry, I'm sorry, we kind of barged in.
No, you were late for you, but-
Well, we thought you were on the clock.
No, we're here on it, okay.
Commissioner Boyce, you had a comment?
Well, I, I'm just, uh, against a time constraint today, up till 12:30, if, I don't, I'm not sure where we're, how we're scheduling.
I don't think that-
The next topic is, we're going to have a minutes discussion, and, uh-
It'll be in minutes?
Box staff will, will be looking for direction from the board, we're going to kind of summarize where we are at to date with the minutes that John Jezewitz has been working on since being here, get direction from the board for essentially presenting the minutes to the board for approval, which is, um, there's the preparation, and then there's the approval, and so we're at the point where we, anyway, so, so I think we can have that wrapped up in short order.
I, I would say so too, so why don't we, uh, before 12, before 12:30?
Thank you, Mr. Trump.
Why don't we take, if, let's call it, can we take a 10-minute break?
Till about 11:30?
11:30?
Yes.
Please?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
What draws you to the Oregon coast? Is it the green and blue surf on a brilliant sunny day, or angry boiling waves during a raging winter storm? Do you prefer quiet coves, or powerful breakers turning the sand? How about sand castles? Do you come for the rising tide, or the setting sun, to marvel at whales gliding through the sea, or flying in the sky? Reasons to travel the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are as far-reaching as your imagination. This is a spectacular part of Oregon that traces the entire coastline along Highway 101, guiding you to the sea, and away again, to coastal towns, big and small, lowland marshes, and breathtaking overlooks. It's a long byway stretching from the mouth of the Columbia River to the California border, 363 miles in all, of some of the most unblemished, awe-inspiring seascapes you'll find anywhere. In addition to its designation as a scenic byway, Highway 101 in Oregon also has been selected as an all-American road. That means when you come here, you will experience one of only 31 roads considered to be the best of the best in America.
You know, when people come to the Oregon coast, they're really astonished how beautiful it is, and what separates it from many of the other places in North America that are coastal is how undeveloped it is, and that's because Oregon had a, a very far-sided land use program back in the 1970s. We have all these wonderful state parks along the scenic byway, that are perfect places to stop and enjoy nature in a relatively unspoiled way.
From the north, you begin in Astoria. From the north, you begin in Astoria, the first permanent European settlement in the Pacific Northwest. It's a genuine maritime community with ship traffic from around the world seeking harbor up the Columbia. The official state maritime museum of Oregon sits here on the river. Beautiful Victorian houses dot the hillside. And standing six hundred feet above sea level is the one-hundred-twenty-five-foot Astoria Column. It features a hand-painted spiral frieze that would stretch over five hundred feet if unwound. Heading south, you'll find the community of Seaside, a popular vacation spot that offers miles of public beaches, an oceanfront promenade, and a downtown core packed with restaurants, shops, and even a beach-type arcade. Cannon Beach is home to one of Oregon's most photographed natural wonders, Haystack Rock. Get your shots from the beach, or take a short drive up to Ecola State Park and look down on this two-hundred-thirty-five-foot work of art. The picturesque small town is filled with art galleries, shops, and cafes. Ready for more? Ten miles to the south, this is the view from Cape Falcon. You're seven hundred feet above the Pacific. Here, the Pacific Coast Byway has been carved out of Nea County Mountain and held in place by stone walls built in the nineteen-thirties by craftsmen in the Civilian Conservation Corps. Upon descending the mountain, the highway drifts inward around Tillamook Bay to Tillamook, the unofficial dairy capital of Oregon. The verdant valley of dairy farms in this area produces twenty-five million gallons of milk annually. Much of that is processed into natural cheddar cheese. And near more than eight hundred miles of navigable waters, Tillamook is a crossroads for North Coast recreation. From here, you owe it to yourself to veer off Highway one-oh-one to explore the Three Cape Scenic Loop. This drive places you right at the beach, beginning with Cape Mirs, home to the shortest lighthouse in Oregon. Nine lighthouses stand sentinel along Oregon's coastline. They're monuments to our maritime heritage, towering links to the past, and as much a part of the rugged Oregon coastal landscape as any offshore monolith. The Cape Mirs Lighthouse was first illuminated in eighteen ninety. Oregon's oldest lighthouse is at Cape Blanco, the westernmost point in the state. It was commissioned in eighteen seventy to aid shipping generated by gold mining and the lumber industry. The ninety-three-foot-high Yaquena Head Lighthouse is the tallest in Oregon. Today, its automated light continues to aid navigation at the entrance to Yaquena Bay. Many of the lighthouses are open to the public. Most happen to be excellent places to view nesting seabirds and offshore sea life. Tide pools, those rocky areas between high and low tides, support unique and diverse plants and animals. Vast amounts of colorful, otherworldly creatures wait to be discovered. But walk cautiously. These organisms are tough enough to withstand the pounding surf but are utterly vulnerable to human activity. Wildlife and sea life abound on the coast.
There are six national wildlife refuges along the Oregon coast. The Pacific Coast Scenic Byway bisects these refuges or, or goes alongside them. It provides you the opportunity to see a wide variety of abundant wildlife, including seabirds, seals and sea lions, deer and elk, and many other wildlife.
Cape Kewanda lies at the southern end of the Three Cape Scenic Loop, near the town of Pacific City. Here, you'll find a second Haystack Rock on the byway. Hike up the dune to marvel at stunning views of sandstone formations as they turn yellow, gold, or even red in the changing sunlight. If your timing is right, you'll spot one or two of the Dory fleet sprint onto the beach after a day of fishing. How's this for a dinner setting? Restaurants along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway accommodate just about any taste. Many serve an ocean view with every meal. Up and down the coast, you'll find seafood, of course, but don't limit yourself just because you're by the water. The Central Coast begins around Lincoln City, which is one of the larger communities on the byway. It has a reputation for being windy and was recognized by Kite Lines Magazine as the best place to fly a kite in North America. It was incorporated from several small towns and, as a result, offers a sandy beach that is seven and a half miles long. A number of small state parks lie nestled along the ocean between Lincoln City and Newport. Stop, get out of your car, and take in the commanding views that are there, right next to your all-American road. Depot Bay boasts the world's smallest navigable harbor, six square acres in all. A seawall runs the length of the downtown, so everywhere you go, you're rewarded with a dramatic view of the Pacific. It's considered Oregon's whale-watching capital, with thousands making their way past Oregon each fall and spring. Fishing and whale-watching excursions regularly set sail from this little harbor. Leaving Depot Bay, you'll soon find yourself at Cape Fowlweather, a basalt outcropping that looms five hundred feet above the water. It was here, in seventeen seventy-eight, British Captain James Cook first sighted the mainland of North America on the Pacific coast. A fierce storm that almost put an end to his expedition earned this rugged stretch of coastline its name. Coastal weather can change by the hour. You will find a lot of wet days, but rain can become blue sky with white clouds in an afternoon. Mist kissing the headlands burns away, or storms can last for days. Some people come for those storms. Whether you find sunbursts of happiness or cloud cover like a quilt, there's always a reason to come back. Like Lincoln City, Newport is one of the larger towns on the byway. The historic bayfront on the north side of Yaquena Bay hosts one of Oregon's largest commercial fishing fleets. It has a busy, genuine working waterfront field with fish plants and boats coming and going from as far away as Alaska. On the south side of the bay is the Oregon Coast Aquarium. Share waters beneath the ocean with sharks and rays, and don't miss the sea otters at mealtime.
Now, all four of our otters were rescued otters. They were found out in the wild.
For the next fifty miles, your trip along Highway one-oh-one hugs the coast. Many more state parks offer opportunities to stop and take in outstanding vistas, crashing waves, and offshore rock formations. Two small towns of note are Waldport and Yaha's. Waldport sits on Alsey Bay where fishing, clamming, and crabbing are popular. The forty-mile stretch south of Waldport marks steep headlands, jagged volcanic outcrops, and jaw-dropping scenery, the rugged edge of the Oregon coast. Yaha's is a quiet, unhurried artist town just a couple of miles north of Cape Perpetua. Drive to the top of this bluff, and you'll be eight hundred feet above the water. On a clear day, you can see seventy miles of Oregon coastline. Drive past Hacita Head Lighthouse to the sea lion caves. A quick elevator ride two hundred feet down puts you in America's largest sea cave, the year-round home of wild stellar sea lions. Rugged cliffs give way to graceful beaches as you approach Florence. In the spring, be on the lookout for wild rododendrons along the roadside. Similar to Newport, you'll find an historic old-town commercial district along the Sayusla River. Florence is the gateway to the Oregon Dunes National Recreation Area, a forty-seven-mile sandbox of winds-sculpted sand dunes towering five hundred feet above sea level. These are the largest expanse of coastal sand dunes in North America. Reed's Port is at the center of the Oregon Dunes. But you can do more than ride a dune buggy or motorcycle. A short three miles east of town on Highway thirty-eight, more than one hundred Roosevelt elk reside at the Dean Creek Elk Viewing Area. Early mornings or just before dusk are the best times to photograph the herd. Paying homage to Oregon's timber heritage, Reed's Port hosts an annual chainsaw sculpting championship, a time to watch three-dimensional artwork come to life right before your eyes. Mountains of sand continue at Winchester Bay. You'll also find an active marina here. It's a great place to try your hand at crabbing or take a charter for salmon or bottom fishing. The dunes end and you enter the coast's largest urban area, at Coos Bay. It has the deepest natural harbor between Seattle and San Francisco. Foreign vessels sail under the massive McCullough Bridge. You may have noticed dotted along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are many beautiful and iconic bridges. The Megler Bridge in Astoria, Yaquena Bay Bridge in Newport, Alsey Bay Bridge in Waldport, Sayusla River Bridge in Florence, and the magnificent McCullough Bridge in Coos Bay are works of art in their own right. Charleston is slightly off the byway at the mouth of the bay. It was once an old waterfront fishing village and has become a commercial...
We're back on the record here, so.
It's eleven-thirty-one. We're back after ten-minute recess. It's, again, continuing with the workshop of Wednesday, June fourteenth. Again, eleven-thirty-one. This particular, this is the second portion of the workshop, and it is on meeting minutes. And I'll open this to county council.
Thank you, and I appreciate you opening it to county council, serving in my capacity as the BACH admin supervisor for John Jesuit. Minutes, as you saw from the audit presentation and probably from your historical knowledge, have been a, just a point that needs work. And so, it's a task I've been told John was a priority for him, and he's been working on them, and he has several minutes accumulated from different meetings. And he's provided, um, a couple of samples minutes for your review. And the, really, the, the bottom line on the minutes is, um, how much narrative and content do we want? It, minutes are perhaps a, an art versus a science. There's certain minimum requirements that are legal standards for minutes as described in the Attorney General's Manual. But that being said, the minutes are a record of the county's transactions of business. But, but it's a matter of resources, as the auditors explained as well. John Jesuit is our only resource on this, and, um, the more detailed the minutes are, the longer it takes and the less other items he can, he can get to. And then, at the end, um, I just want you to consider, Commissioner Gold had a person contact her about volunteering in the BACH office on our policies. And what I, I, we had, I had exchanged messages with that person. I think their name is Scrivener, if I'm not mistaken. And as John and I were preparing for this, I actually thought, boy, if we could get a volunteer who could go on our website, look at our meetings, and start preparing minutes for the board to do, that would be something. But, um, for the time being, John Jesuit will be doing them, preparing them for the board review and approval. And I just would like John, then, if he's got time, to describe for the board the two minutes that are in front of them. It looks like you have a workshop minute and a board meeting minute. They're in different formats, and maybe you could just talk about the reason for that as well, um, because I don't know that it's a, a legal requirement. You're gonna be hot-miked, so you can, um, unless there were questions to start with. But John, why don't you describe the...
Can I just ask one question?
Yes.
Are both of these forms legal?
I'm going to say yes. And, um, so, the, the minutes, the minutes are just to reflect the action. Now, on meeting, on, and, and so, the public record law requires notice, public attendance, and minutes be taken of meetings. Minutes under the Attorney General's rule, and I'm talking off the top of my head from memory of looking at it in the past, but it says that you need to talk about attendance and then principal subjects described. But for instance, in a, right, members present, and then motions, results of votes, substance of discussion on any matter, and then reference to document discussed at a meeting. But see, for workshops, yes, there could be references to documents and discussion, but of course, we don't do votes or, or roll calls per se at, at workshops. So, I, I think, I think it's good to have workshop minutes in a different format so that when you look at them instantly, you know, okay, this is a workshop. The others are commissioner minutes so that they don't get, um, mistaken. But John, I'll, I'll let you talk about it unless there are other questions right now about things.
But, uh, thank you, County Council Huddle. Per County Council Huddle's direction, I looked up the Attorney General for Oregon, uh, Public Records and Meetings Manual, and there's a section on minutes. And I summarized what is absolutely necessary in minutes, and that is, uh, what type of meeting and where is the meeting at? A date and start and adjourn time, who's attending, agenda items, testimony and discussion of each agenda item, and then a motion on each agenda item, and at the very end, go to executive session. So, those are the things that have to be included in the minutes per Attorney General of Oregon. This form right here, this is the one that was used by the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee. They, uh, I got this from Ken DuKet, and I, I got the template, I got it from Ken DuKet, and I modified it for, for the workshop. And it's, um, it's not a time sense, time sensitive is a wrong phrase. But for example, many times, a commissioner will say something, that the meeting starts at ten. Commissioner will address the topic at ten forty-five, and then address the same topic at eleven fifteen. And that's not reflected in here. So, some of the comments that County, uh, Houston made here on this page one could've been made thirty minutes apart.
So, question, does it really matter whether the time's there or not if we have the essence of the meeting? In my opinion, no, but...
And I, I concur. This is more of a time-sensitive document. Or in other words, these points are pretty much, um...
As the agenda went.
Yeah, there might be a discrepancy, four or five minutes, but it's not gonna be thirty, forty-five minute discrepancy.
So, right, when you say time-sensitive, you mean the minutes of the, on the Board of Commissioners' meetings are more or less chronological, whereas...
Yes, well, 'cause, 'cause I do a stream of consciousness, just typing here. Typically, I, I've analyzed the seventeen, seventeen meetings I've taken minutes for, and I type out about a thousand words an hour. For example, today was nine hundred ninety-two at the one-hour mark. So, to organize those takes a while, also to, uh, and, and depends, this, both of these things take formatting, and that's what takes the time. Because pretty much, I cut and paste what I type, correct the spelling errors, correct the abbreviations, and then format it so it looks, looks good.
So, how much time are you spending on minutes, just basically?
Oh, boy.
Per hour of meeting, how's that?
Per hour, I mean, I haven't kept track, I have not kept track of that. I would say this one took me about nine hours to do.
And that's April fifth meeting?
Right.
How long did that meeting last?
From ten until three-thirty approximately, and that's on, that's addressed on the, so that was, uh...
Thank you. And there's eighteen pages of, of minutes out of essentially five and a half hours, and it took another seven hours to make the minutes. That's, that does seem that it's the formatting, so...
Almost a burden.
Well, it's, 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 it's partly an explanation. I don't know if it's an explanation, but it's, again, it's resource-intensive, time-intensive, and we have limited resources. And so, um, and, and then, what might make sense is if we, if we went through one of these and the board could say, it's important to have this included or not, so that for future, we can, we can figure out what to leave in or out. And that's, that's something. So, go ahead, Mr. Chair.
Just a question, um, on the time again, because we said, or, or your response on the April fifth, which, which started at ten and ended at, what did we say, three-thirty?
Yes.
Thanks. Um, approximately, how long did that take you? And I, I say approximately...
About nine hours to edit this format.
Okay, so that's...
I have my format here.
That was from taking your original notes during the meeting, and after that, it took you nine hours to format it?
Yes.
And, and what was the, the diff, what you felt was the time, the most time-consuming point was the formatting or...
Well, formatting and putting everything in order so it looks good.
Okay, so, the next question, and we'll come back, 'cause County Council made a, you know, certainly the com, some comments on this. On the, on the workshop, which was started at one and ended at two-thirty, so that was an hour and a half versus four, almost four, three, four times that long, three times Approximately, how long did that take? Although it was a workshop, so it's completely different as far as probably the dialogue that was going on.
Again, I didn't keep it...
And I say approximate.
I would say three to four hours.
Okay, okay. So, um, I, I'm gonna go back to what County Council suggested, okay? Because the, I think we're dealing with two different beasts here, you know? Because the, I think we're dealing with two different beasts here, you know? Two, not only two different formats, but we're dealing with two different types of, completely two different types of meetings.
Of records, right.
Not that the, I think the minutes and records-keeping, not to get bogged down in a technicality, it doesn't basically identify, it's saying, a public meeting. Well, a workshop is a public meeting, a Board of Commissioner's office is a public meeting. We could go on and on there. So I, not to get bogged down there, but I think that I'd certainly, this raised, the second, the workshop raised some questions, not even so much for the, for the sequence of time. But we basically had one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven people, some point spoke, okay? And then, of course, I didn't completely follow the action required, because it was, was that the action that, that was required according to the accountant? Was it, were the two tied together? I just wasn't sure, you know, as, as those comments, or is that...
This action is what County Council provided.
Or what there is with Chairman Huxley. Or, it almost looked like that was an opinion, you know, there's not, I just, simply moving surplus, but...
Sure, I think using the phrase "action required," this is a workshop, so you, you don't really have any action required.
Yeah. Just, just so we would look and see, okay, whose, was it just a comments from the same person, or what?
Yeah.
And then to, if we went that way, to also have the heading on each page, because I found myself, you know, following through and saying, wait a minute, what was that again? Oh, action, you know, and...
Sure.
So I had some difficulty, yeah, following that. That took, although even in this format, and again, because John wasn't tracking these, you know, he didn't start with the purpose of, let me track so I can see how long it will take. So these are approximate times. But it seems that the approximate time per hour of meeting was about the same, and that may change, you know, if, now that you're, you're, you're tracking probably closer for the future. So was it, was it not, but...
Still almost seems an hour, hour for hour, almost.
Yeah, it's almost the same. I would, I would suggest, and going back to County, County Council's comment, you know, that we look closer, you know, I looked at these, but I didn't, you know, I spent, oh, I spent an hour or so, maybe. But that we look closer, and then come back and see. My, my preference was the first one, especially if, if...
When you say the first one, you mean the County Board of, the County Board of Commissioners' meeting?
Go through, and, and perhaps we can halve that, you know, if we say, knock it down and, and get it to something...
Sure.
But that's, again, it's a six or, you know, seven hours, meeting too.
I'm looking at all this, and do we need all this back-and-forth comments between people? I'm saying, no, we just need the, the basic motions.
And what I've seen is, some of them will, instead of saying, you know, we're, if you look on the third page, page three, for instance, you've got...
Oh, that's the three of 19?
Yes, you know, looking near the top, County Council Huddle reviewed rules, and then you've got the, the hollow bullet points of what I said.
Yeah.
I mean, sometimes, I might have seen minutes that say, County Huddle reviewed rules, Commissioner Boyes opposed rules. These minutes give the reasons, which again, are good historical records, and then Commissioner Gold, and then you, you know, sometimes you could have colon, spoken opposition or something, and they can be more summary versus having the back and forth. But that's a board, it's a, it's an art, not a science, and it's...
But that was going through, what you're suggesting, to go through this. But I think this format, given that it was about equal on time per hour, was, I liked a lot better than...
Okay.
Than the three pages.
I see. Well, just this format. In other words, if we put both workshop minutes and general meeting minutes in the same format, you won't have to box motions or any of that kind of stuff.
As long as it still made sense.
No, I think what I'm hearing the, the chair say is that he doesn't think we need to necessarily follow this format, but to put workshop minutes in the, in the Board of Commissioner, just have one form of minutes.
Because, but if he had come back and said, it took me...
Oh, right. There's a significantly saving.
One quarter of the time, but that's, that's not the case. So because of that, I'm saying this, but then to follow your sort of lead there, as far as then go through and reduce it down with the logic and the examples that you gave.
Here's what I'm willing to do. The, you know, if the board wants to kind of take this under consideration themselves, and if we could have a very brief, you know, the reason we have a workshop is to talk about this without taking up a bunch of time at an action meeting. And what I was hoping to do is get something to the board, so during an action meeting, we could then get direction, and something very short, where the board could say, do the minutes, take out some of the back and forth, summarize the conversation. We have a good video system for documenting, if anybody really wants to know exactly what was said. But I did talk while Commissioner Boyes had his hand up, I just wanted to see if he had anything else to say, so...
Commissioner Boyes?
Go ahead, Commissioner Gold, I can wait.
Well, I was just gonna say, we've got these videos. If someone wants to go look at the detail, they can do that. But also, John keeps track of the time when someone chimes in. If he just put those little times, then someone could look back at the minutes and go to the time on the video and have at it.
That's why I keep track of the time, to wind it on the video.
Right.
Commissioner Boyes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think it bears repeating, and we all understand our responsibility, minutes are absolutely one of the most important things we can do. However, in the interest of time, keeping things simple, a couple of comments I'd like to make for the board's consideration. Number one, if we have him typing a thousand words a minute, that's pretty good doc...
An hour.
Excuse me.
Okay.
Man, you're not paid to...
Smoking.
I think that was like 16 words a minute.
Thousand, thousand words per hour. That really is, that along with the video backup, really gives us the opportunity to be pretty confident that we're, we're not overlooking anything. As far as having a real clean version, if the public comes back, or ourselves need more detail, we, again, as Commissioner Gold just said, we can go to the video, the public can go to the, I'll just, for lack of a better term, the raw document that he's typed. Takes pressure off him, you, capacity to do other things. I just, the reason I'm putting a little confidence in the, the original document that he's going to do, is that it's, it's pretty free from anybody regrouping and saying, no, that wasn't what I said, or that, you know, and getting involved. I want to keep commissioners out of that, and I'm just trust whoever are, and, and County Council. Yeah, that's all.
If you had just the basics there...
County Council was for...
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just gonna say, if you just have the basics there, then there's gonna be none of this, oh, I said this, she said that, that kind of thing. If they want to go back to the video, great, but if you put the times there, and they really want to go back and review the video, how much time would it take you to put the times in there?
We'll cut it in half.
And what, and what could, what could happen, and here's what I have seen, because the process is, John creates the minutes, and he'll put them in a folder of draft for the commissioners to review. And once you've reviewed them, we'll bring them to a meeting to adopt. And during the review process, if there's absolute, and he'll have then the times of the video, where you can go and look to see what was said. And if there's something that needs to be corrected, or specifically added, that you wanted to make sure was in there, you could say, please, you know, quote me at this point, and then we'd bring that back. But it would, that would be, I think we'd have a significant time savings, and we'd have accurate and lawful minutes, and, and some level of efficiency. Now, that being said, is there any, and I know we're talking about, and the auditor said, start now and move forward. I have traded messages with, with Mrs. Scrivener on respect to the policies, and we didn't really move forward on that. But for, I think we just, it just kind of dropped, not for any, there wasn't no decision, it just, other things got in the way. But if, I would like to talk to her, if she's interested in really doing something, and she could do it remotely from her home, is if she's interested in starting to do minutes from past meetings as a volunteer, it, it, it might be, you know, or just if anyone's watching, if there's any volunteers who want to draft minutes for the county.
Well, she's extremely competent.
Yeah.
She was a legal secretary at one time.
Right, and so I just don't know if that's something she'd be interested in. I know she was interested in, in looking at the policies, but if she's really just a heart, you know, a volunteer at heart, maybe she's not too picky about what we asked her to volunteer on. So I'll just, I'll, I'll touch base with her again. I'll just see.
You know, I'm gonna see her at a meeting Friday. Do you want me just to kind of...
Talk to her about this meeting, and, and that her name came up, and, and that, see if it's anything that she might be interested in.
Past meetings, right?
Yeah, if, if possible. And heck, maybe if we do meetings going forward, John Jesuit and I could work on perhaps a procurement policy that we need to update, or some other things that are just...
I think that would be wonderful. Spending the whole time on minutes just doesn't make any sense.
A few more comments, and, and more to, to Commissioner Gold here. And, and again, I don't want to get bogged down with statutes, but I don't want to just dismiss them either. And it's, again, it doesn't differentiate between a workshop and any other meeting. A public meeting is a public meeting.
That's true.
And, and what it does do, and, and the, it's very specific as far as what's required. And what throws a really confusing wrench into this is the Oregon administrative rules, in my opinion, as far as the archival or the retention periods. And so it's not like you can just take a few, make a few little notes, because we can always go back to the audio or the video. The, 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 the administrative rules don't read like that. And you can have interpretations, but they're saying that, number one, a audio or video is not a permanent record. They don't, because they, the, the material used on a DVD and so forth, they will break down. And that's, that's why they, not just the state of Oregon gets into these retention periods, and they have page, pages and pages and pages, so that it reduces written minutes, and it identifies them specifically in a section of the administrative rules are permanent.
What about microfilm?
Wait a minute, okay. Then it, then it identifies, okay, what permanent is, and what permanent isn't, and what a video or audio is, and it says, once you have created that permanent record, then you still have to keep the, the, the video or audio that you used for a period of one or two years after that. But back to your question, microfilm, but you, microfilm is something that you, you're going to reduce text to microfilm, so you, you're back to written. It's not that you can take the, the audio and create microfilm, or the video and create microfilm. So that gets, I think, more expensive. Yes, it's, it's, it's recognized for archival purposes, but it's very expensive.
Don't want to go there.
So my suggestion, again, I'm going back to what County Council said here, you know, we look at this, I would, so that we cannot, could John Jesuit take this 19 pages, and reduce it down, I think in a couple of hours, perhaps, to what he would perceive would, would suffice, and then we look at five pages, or three, or six, or seven?
Side-by-side comparison?
Yeah. Rather than...
You still have, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Rather than us say, well, let's do this, then I think that would be a couple or three hours very well spent, and an actual side-by-side. And I think we would probably agree, yes.
We may not be able to make it by the meeting on the 21st, because the deadline for that is today. And that's something I would like to sort of change topics, but I would, I think we're fixing to have a June 28 regular business meeting.
Yeah.
And I, I would like the board to, you know, allow me to notice such a thing, and put out, and just tell all the departments that we're going to have one last extra meeting. Apparently, the agenda for the 21st is really large, and I think we're gonna have to break it up. And I think just the number of public hearings on some of our budgets, and some of our other documents, there's several of those. So I think, I think we're heading to that. So it's possible, with what you say, that we could have it back on the 28th, so that we could, really, we've been kind of, you know, our, our minutes have been backed up, and we need to get them starting flowing again. So John, I saw him nod his head, that he thinks he could, he could give you a side-by-side comparison of, of these 19 versus...
In his discretion, because it's in the discretion of the person that's creating the minutes, and it has to be.
He creates them, but also the board reviews them, and the board, prior to final approval, would have the option to say, please add this, or please add that, or correct this, or correct that. So it's a group process, but it starts with John Jesuit.
But this would, this would just continue with his per se, you know, he did this, let's not us get our, get in the middle of it...
Micromanage, if you will.
And, and see what he comes back with.
I think Commissioner Boyes had some comments, and then Commissioner Gold, and vice versa.
So Commissioner Boyes?
Thank you. How secure are the videos? I mean, that might be an academic question, but I don't know.
I think they're hosted offline, are they...
Well, I think they're secure.
I understand the age process, but...
But it has more to do, you know, when you get into the, the statutes and the, and the rules, it has more to do with retention and archives.
Charles, were you gonna talk about how secure the videos are?
But, but they're, you know, I'm not sure what, what you mean when you say how secure.
Well, just...
Does it have to do with the length, or the, the life of them, or what?
Let's bring him in, and I think he might be able to answer that.
What was your question?
I'll, I'll complete when he's done.
Charles Nichols from Brand Media, very unorthodox to appear and speak during a meeting I'm operating, so try to not repeat this incident. But in general, we are backing up in Triplegate all files of all meetings. So they exist on the cloud, and you have a contract with that service provider to tell you that that is a secure storage facility, that they don't, are not just gonna lose. We also keep local copies of all your minutes.
What does local mean?
Your minutes or videos. Local as in onsite here, and we also keep them in a separate Dropbox virtual cloud system that my colleague Nick Brand maintains. So we pretty much have everything you've ever done video-wise in Triplegate.
Two clouds in here, wow.
So because, because literally the channel server, what's replaying all of your content, both the PSAs, the state legislature, all the Curry County content, the FEMA workshop, so forth, all that exists and will continue to persist on your channel server as long as we replay these items. In fact, all your meetings that we have from 2016 are still in there as well.
I thought that was probably your answer, as far as backup go, and I appreciate that, and Mr. Chair, I'm satisfied with, my question's answered.
Commissioner Gold?
My only other comment, if...
Thanks, Charles.
JJ or John were to come up with a, a template for meetings, or minutes, then if Fran Schreiner decides that she wants to do it, she can at least have a template of the type of things that we want.
Sure, that, I think, we would expect that, Commissioner Boyes?
Why do we need a volunteer? I think we just solved the problem here.
Thank you. Part of what we were talking about, the volunteer was for perhaps looking backwards.
Oh.
The backlog from, that had been undone. It, again, and...
Sorry, I missed that.
That's okay. No, that's okay. It was kind of free-flow.
And one, were you through?
Yes, sir.
Okay. One additional suggestion, and I know I've talked probably just in passing to, to John Jesuit on this, is that the, it would, I think, be not just suggested, but essential, and it should have been done some time back, but to make the $500 or whatever purchase is necessary to buy the proper equipment, and earphones, and whatever, to playback, anything like that, that, that transcribers use all the time, that makes it so much easier to, oh, stop, now I gotta go back a little bit, and, you know, back and forth. It's the right piece, the right tool for the right job, to do the job properly. I would really encourage that.
Very good. Well, then that's all we had. It sounds like we've got direction. My understanding is that John Jesuit and I, and John primarily, will work on making a side-by-side comparison of the April 5th, so that on the 28th, you can give him some further direction, and we'll get these minutes going.
Okay. Commissioner Boyes?
Do you have a timeframe on the, on the remaining minutes that, that we do need to complete? to complete, just maybe a general goal that we could...
I'm not sure, can you keep asking, I'm not tracking your exact question.
The minutes that are not complete prior, we're going to try and find assistants to go back and do that, I mean, even a year would be six months.
It could be a year's, a year's worth of minutes, so probably a hun, over a hundred hours of meetings, and then if it is an hour for hour, you know, a hundred hours worth of possibly volunteer time, I'm, that, that's just off the top.
Let's just say we're aware of the problem, and...
Yeah.
Well, and then there's another problem, we could not possibly approve or disapprove the minutes simply because we weren't on the job at that point in time.
That's a, that's an interesting point, yeah.
That, that's why we looked and I interfaced with County Council, and it, this goes back with minutes that are, or have not been done, goes back, I stopped at five years back.
Yeah, there, so, but for now, I think going forward, we'll, we'll work as directed, the other part I think is a thornier and a, you know, more, more of a question mark.
Okay, and I'm happy to hear that we, we're going to kind of close the gap on that, I think that's something we can kind of hang our hat on and should. How did you get these minutes? I just got them today.
I got them today, too.
How did I get them?
Yeah.
I printed them out off, online.
Okay.
They're works, I'm online, that's true.
They are online, John Jesuit, or someone can say where they are online, what does that mean?
They're a box package.
Oh, they're in the, so, all right, Commissioner, so if you go on to your, okay, thank you, all right, very good.
Mr. Gold and I are trying to catch up on that.
That's all we had, is there's anything else, we're, we're, we're through.
There'll be a general meeting on June twenty-eighth then?
Yes, it will be, because we're going to need to conduct business, ten AM, and, and I'll put the, the notice out, and maybe you could, to let all the department heads know we'll have a, another meeting, so that they can have a deadline and they can get their action items.
And, and I'm assuming that there may be some items that some people may think are going to be on the twenty-first that will end up being on the twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
I understand.
And for me, for me, right, for me, the pri, the, so, when we put together the meeting for the twenty-first, the primary will be Louise Calstrum's budget and public hearing items that have already been noticed and whatnot.
May I, Mr. Chair, may I ask if All Care is going to be in that, do you know yet?
That's going to be on the twenty, I, we talked, we met yesterday.
We postponed that to the twenty-eighth.
Thank you, I'm going to, so, so there were three things I was going to put on for the twenty-first, I think one would be All Care, the other would be a contract with Louise Calstrum, and the third was going to be one other item, but what I have to do is I will look at all the items that have been submitted for the twenty-first and make some decisions. In my opinion, the All Care has been going on for over a year, and I don't see what another week of time on that, why, again, I, I, I think...
We have some presenters, Mr. Council, that, Mr. Huddle, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay.
That, we're, we're going to scramble to try and get something to the board on the twenty-first, so if they had that extra week, would be, I, I guess I'll make that in the form of a request.
They were trying to get on the twenty-first, or you mean, or today?
No, no, the twenty-first, but it would have to be on the agenda today, and so that's...
I, I, I don't, I mean, I, be that as it may, I, I don't know that that's going to be informative of the...
What's one more week?
Right, I don't think that, I, I don't want them to get their hopes up, I don't think the item is about, you know, granting requests for All Care funds by the Board of Commissioners, it's a different item, but they'll probably be able to talk about it no matter what, as a normal course in our meetings, but I honestly, in my mind, All Care would be one that could be continued, because it doesn't have a lot of time urgency, so...
And it's not going to be a, a big, lengthy agenda item, so could we get consensus on that to continue the twenty-eighth?
That, that's kind of, it's not even, it doesn't need to be continued, that's what I'll be doing for now.
But see, I have to get it on the agenda, so...
Oh, I see, well...
Or maybe it's going to be on the agenda, I can just defer to you on that, and just...
Well, it will be, Mr. Commissioner, it'll be, as the Chair said, some folks have already submitted items for the agenda of the twenty-first that are going to be bumped, and I will be noticing everyone what's, what's not going to be on the twenty-first. And as I just talked, in my mind, All Care makes sense not to be on the twenty-first.
Okay.
So likely twenty-eight, twenty-eight.
Look what I found in the cafeteria.
Yeah, I know, all right, that's all I had though, Mr. Chair, I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to adjourn the meeting at twelve oh-six.
Okay, thanks, everyone.